I hereby call to order this meeting to the Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission. Today is Wednesday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the time is eleven oh one A M. Would those commissioners that are in attendance please identify themselves and state as to whether they're here via phone or Google meets or in person?
This is Joe Pennington. I'm participating via Google meets and telephone.
And this is Eric Feinstein. I'm participating via Google meets.
Very good.
Go ahead. Sorry.
And I am Scott Fletcher, and I am participating via telephone. Okay. Uh, welcome, everybody. We do have a quorum, a full house, so that's great news. Um, let's move on to B, our new business. The review, discussion, and possible action on three different pieces, the first being pursuant to A R S sections five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, and A A C R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four for persons over the age of thirty-six. The new license application submitted by Mr. Albe Tremblay for a two thousand and twenty-two professional boxing athlete license. Mr. Vela, will you speak to Mr. Tremblay's application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Tremblay is thirty-six years old. Uh, he does have some experience as as an amateur MMA fighter, um, and has been training for quite some time. Uh, last year we had done an evaluation. Juan Estrada performed an evaluation on Mr. Tremblay, and at that time was not comfortable approving him as he, you know, he just his skill set wasn't there yet. Um, we went and visited Mr. Tremblay, uh, just the other day on on Monday, and Juan Estrada and myself both reviewed him spar for six rounds, and I'm happy to say that he's improved a great deal. Uh, he has a, he has a, um, very good stamina and seems ready to compete. Um, when I spoke with Mr. Tremblay, I let him know that we, that I would keep a watchful eye on him, um, and ensure that he's matched, um, with with opponents that will be competitive. Um, and he is gung ho about it, and with that, sir, I do recommend his approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vela, and thank you for how thorough you are in these regards. It's important we kick the tires a little bit. Uh, commissioners, thoughts, questions regarding Mr. Tremblay?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Pennington. Uh, Mr. Vela, did you have an opportunity to, uh, talk with Mr. Tremblay about his training regimen?
Uh, yes, sir, I did, and Mr. Tremblay informed me that he trains, uh, five to six days a week. Um, his training is typically three hours in in duration. He he breaks it down by sparring, um, several times a week, and he does, he obviously does, um, he is involved in Jiu-Jitsu, Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, boxing, and mixed martial arts in general, so his training consists of all three disciplines. Um, he also informed me that his conditioning, uh, regimen is very strong. He typically runs two to three miles a day, and, uh, and also jumps rope, um, and does strength and conditioning. He stays away, he he informed me, he stays away from weightlifting, as you know, he he likes to stick with more calisthetics and, um, you know, body exercises. Um, but overall, it seems to be a very, uh, common training regimen that he has.
Thank you, Mr. Vela.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Feinstein?
Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions.
Fair enough. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Feinstein?
Yeah, yeah, are, um, is there a particular event or opponent in mind, or is this just obtaining the license in order, uh, to look forward to joining an event in the future?
Um, sir, I believe that, uh, Mr. Vargas is online. He's a promoter for this weekend. They did want to, um, match Tremblay up with, uh, Mr. Tremblay up with an opponent for this weekend, um, but I I don't recall off the top of my head who that opponent was, and it's not in box rec currently as they were waiting for his approval.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I just, given the 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 past concerns and, um, and the age, I would just want to make sure that, um, as a commission, we were, um, careful to make sure that the, um, opponent, um, should he, um, be matched up is, um, appropriate, given the zero and zero boxing record and and, uh, all the other considerations that we've we've talked about.
I couldn't agree more. Um, and that, and I did, uh, inform Mr. Tremblay that that we would, um, take precaution in making sure that, um, anybody that he gets matched up with will be a suitable opponent.
Thank you. Mr. Vela, I think we're all in agreement on this. Uh, careful matchmaking is a critical consideration, and if we do go forward with this, we'd ask that you keep careful eyes on, uh, who Mr. Tremblay might get in the ring with.
Yes, sir.
Any other thoughts or questions or motions?
None for me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have no other, uh, questions either.
Okay, I another, uh, I as well, uh, the chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, I move pursuant to A R S five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, and A A C R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four, uh, that we, uh, approve the new boxing license application submitted by Mr. Albe Tremblay, uh, for a two thousand and twenty-two, uh, professional boxing athlete license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, commissioners. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Tremblay. Uh, item B two is also pursuant to A R S sections five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, and A A C R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four for persons over the age of thirty-six. The new license application submitted by Mr. Cesar Villaraga for a two thousand and twenty-two professional boxing athlete license. Mr. Vela, will you speak to Mr. Villaraga's application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Villaraga is, uh, has some good experience, um, as a boxer, as you can see on his his record. Um, some things that stood, uh, stood out to me is that he, um, won his last bout via K O against an opponent who was six and O. Um, and he's, he won unanimous decision the bout before that to an opponent who was fourteen and two. Both of those opponents had pretty decent records when I looked at their, um, abilities. And, uh, overall, I believe that Mr. Villaraga is very fit to compete. Um, I was not able to, uh, connect with Mr. Villaraga to discuss his training regimen, but he is on the line, um, so we can, we can hear from him, and then I'd be comfortable making a recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. Mr. Villaraga, are you with us?
Gentlemen, uh, Mr. Uh, I am Cesar Garcia, his manager. Uh, I speak English. I'll be translating. Mr. Villaraga is here next to me.
Thank you for joining us. Um, would you please speak to your training regimen and, uh, current condition, if you would, please?
Okay, si puedes hablarnos un poquito de tu, de tu, tu régimen de entrenamiento y tu condicionamiento. Entreno, eh, la mañana, eh, corremos, hacemos condición física, y en las, y en las tardes hacemos condición técnico-táctica en el boxeo. Okay, so right now he does his conditioning, uh, is done in the morning time, and he does his boxing training in the evenings. Um, ¿a qué días hace sus partes? Lunes, miércoles, y viernes. And he'll spar three days a week, which will be Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Villaraga?
No questions, uh, for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions either.
Uh, very good. I I am in the same box as you two. Uh, the chair be open to a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, I moved pursuant to A R S five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, and A A C R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four that we grant a new, uh, professional boxing athlete license, uh, to Mr. Cesar Villaraga.
I second the motion.
Thank you, commissioners. We have motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Villaraga.
Felicidades, gracias a todos ustedes por su oportunidad. Thank you, gentlemen, for the opportunity.
Thank you. We will see you on Friday, it looks like.
Yes, sir. We'll see you, we'll see you guys then. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Uh, item B three is pursuant to A R S section five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, and A A C R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four for persons over the age of thirty-six. The new license application submitted by Mr. Pedro Olgas for a two thousand and twenty-two professional MMA athlete license. Mr. Vela, will you speak to Mr. Olgas's application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Olgas, um, if you look at his, uh, record, he has had, uh, one professional bout, um, and which he lost, uh, by T K O in the first round. Um, that was earlier this year. Um, and so I asked Mr. Olgas to explain, you know, his training regimen and obviously why it is that, uh, that we should approve him, and Mr. Olgas responded to me with the following. He trains five to six days a week, okay, usually two to three hours a day. Um, his training consists of striking, grappling, submission. Uh, he stays up to date with with the rules, you know, from different jurisdictions. Obviously, his last bout was in Colorado. Um, he let me know that, uh, he, his conditioning consists of running and jumping rope as well as swimming. Um, and when I asked him how he feels about his upcoming bout, told me that he's gonna knock the guy out. Um, he has no recent injuries to report. Uh, he walks around typically at two hundred and ten pounds, um, and wants to fight at one eighty-five. He's currently at a hundred and ninety-two pounds, and he informed me that, uh, if you look on the the record that I sent you, there is a bout posted for Colorado on December tenth, um, but that bout is not, um, is no longer relevant. He will be competing here on the Rough Card on December tenth. Um, and so with what I see here, sir, I think that an approval, I would be comfortable with an approval, obviously depending upon, um, the type of opponent, um, and and the opponent's experience.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vela. Commissioners, do you have any thoughts or questions about Mr. Olgas's application?
No, no questions for me. I just, again, echo the concerns of appropriate matchmaking, um, but, um, I think, you know, given, uh, the oh and one record, I think, you know, certainly deserves another, uh, shot at, um, competing, but, uh, again, um, especially given that we're approving for, um, a fighter over the age of thirty-six, I just, uh, want to make sure that that the matchmaking is appropriate, uh, once, uh, that's been arranged.
Thank you, Commissioner. Agreed. Uh, Commissioner Pennington, any thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions, and I thoroughly agree with Commissioner Feinstein's, uh, comments.
That's very good. We're all in agreement. Uh, chair be open to a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to A R S, uh, five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, and A A C R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four, I move, uh, that we approve the new license application submitted by Mr. Pedro Olgas for a two thousand and twenty-two professional MMA athlete license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Olgas. Look forward to your upcoming bouts.
Thank you, guys, and I promise I'll give you guys a good show.
There you go. Best of luck to you. Uh, item C is our information reports, the review, discussion, and possible action. One item is concussion protocol and baseline testing. Mr. Vela, will you please speak to this?
Now, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So, Commissioner Pennington, uh, approached me and asked me to, um, to discuss this topic. Um, obviously, uh, there are some jurisdictions where where, uh, baseline testing and concussion protocols are part of their regular, um, licensing, and I think that that is a good idea. Um, I spoke with Mr. Juan Estrada about the issue. As as I understand, previously, the commission had taken action to to implement, um, that sort of a protocol for licensing, and, um, and I, I, from what I understand, the difficulties with that is a a lack of availability for for people who specialize in that specifically, as well as, obviously, a higher cost, um, for the athletes. Um, now, one, one, uh, well, there's a few solutions that we could, that we could implement. Uh, one idea that I had was if we, if we configure our, and edit our physical examination to have a concussion protocol, um, questionnaire within it, uh, we could get, you know, we could do it that way to where it's all in one document. When they go for their physical exam, they just ask them the questions for the concussion protocol, and then the other option is using, um, software, um, that that has been presented to us by the A B C, um, a program called Sportgate, uh, where fighters can log in on their mobile device and and take the, um, the concussion protocol themselves and and go through the testing protocols. Um, the difficulty here just comes with, um, you know, more, uh, requirements, obviously equates to more financial burden on the fighters, as well as more processing for for our department. Um, and, you know, it's it's already pretty difficult with, uh, the lack of employees and resources that we have. So, um, I just wanted to present that. You know, obviously, I'll continue looking into it if there's any more, um, any more research that I could do on it or, um, solutions that we can find, but maybe some of you have ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. Uh, it's an important topic, and we've run into, uh, cost concerns. We've run into concerns with fighters coming in from other countries and their ability to get a baseline test done quickly before a fight. We've run into some language barriers too in that regard, so it's, uh, and yet, if you talk to neurologists, they would love to have a baseline every time they see someone who is potentially concussed, so, uh, I think it's very important. Uh, commissioners, what are your thoughts about this?
So, um, this is something that, um, I have been, um, supportive of for really since my start, uh, of my work with the commission as a physician, um, all the way back to two thousand and nine. And I think, um, since that time, um, this field continues to evolve, but we've learned more and more about the, um, you know, the impact of repeated concussions on athletes, not just in boxing, but in in other sports, and, um, I think we all recognize that, um, you know, this is, this is a tricky subject in in combat sports, um, because, um, the rule set essentially includes, um, um, concussion, right? I mean, to, um, concuss your opponent is is essentially part of the sport. I think, um, that's not gonna change, but I do think that the onus is on us that if somebody's getting in the ring, um, we should do everything we can to ensure that, um, we are not, um, submitting them to, um, increased risk of harm based on the fact that they had a recent concussion that, um, is clearly, um, has been shown to increase the risk, um, or that they're not returning to baseline after a prior concussion, and so I think, um, there are a lot of ways we could go about this. But, um, I do absolutely understand the, um, the difficulty that it presents, given, um, just the logistics of, you know, how many times are we in this commission, you know, approving a fight, a fighter at the last minute to be on a card, and how would that testing get done prior? And, um, and and the cost and the concerns of people coming from out of the country and and all the other things that, um, uh, Mr. Chairman mentioned, so, um, but I do think that it's worthwhile to, uh, in earnest, explore, um, our options. Other states have have done it, so we wouldn't be, uh, unique, and and other sports have done it. Um, what what I think would be, um, a good thing to explore would be in the the impact testing, because, um, the impact testing is the most well-established, uh, uh, concussion test in the country, and so it, it allows for, um, you know, pretty much anybody in any state and even different parts of the world, um, probably to find somebody to do it, and there are, there are many providers in 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 Arizona that do it, so that it it, it's an easier, um, option. I think I'm I'm also willing to explore self-testing options, like on a phone, the concern with that being, you know, you can just hand the phone to somebody else, and if it's not supervised, then it's very difficult to ensure that the result is truthful. Um, so I, I, again, I, I, I think we should explore multiple avenues and multiple proposals. I do think that, hmm, any, um, protocol that we would would, um, outline would have to have, um, the ability of this commission to make an exception, uh, to say, you know, for these last-minute things or logistical problems that we could, um, uh, have an avenue where we could, um, opt out of the protocol in in certain, um, circumstances, so that it's not, um, uh, significantly delaying the work of the commission or impeding fighters from fighting. Um, but again, I think the situation we had with Anderson Silva, um, two weeks ago demonstrates how, um, visible this subject is and how much, um, uh, I I think, um, pressure there is on us as a commission to get this right. So, I do think the time has come for us to really explore this in earnest, so I'll stop there. Um, but again, I appreciate the opportunity to 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 discuss, uh, you know, this really important, uh, avenue of fighter safety.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pennington, thoughts?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I pretty much concur with what Commissioner Feinstein said. Uh, I am sympathetic to the logistics issue, but I am far more concerned about the health and safety of the fighter. Uh, if for some reason a fighter can't get into Arizona in time to take a, a baseline test of some sort that we determine at at here, but hopefully before the end of the year, uh, then that's just their problem. Uh, we don't want to have somebody that is, uh, that we have no idea whether they have been concussed recently or at any time, uh, without a baseline test. Uh, I don't know what the A B C, uh, exam is. Uh, Mr. Vela, could you tell us more about that? I am familiar with the impact exam. In fact, uh, I was skiing in, uh, Big Sky, Montana, and happened to meet the, uh, guy that developed the test, so I'm somewhat familiar with that. But, uh, I also know that there are logistics issues and others regarding that. So, if we could find out what the A B C test is, as well as, uh, Commissioner Feinstein, uh, may be considering the King Devick, uh, test, which is, uh, can be administered in about ten minutes, I understand. It doesn't require a professional there to, uh, to do it. So, those are my thoughts, Mr. Chairman. I'm sympathetic to the logistics, but I am really concerned about the health and safety of the fighter.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, we spent, back in the day, we spent a fair amount of time on this and looked at things like impact, like King Devick, I think. I think I'm close to it anyway, is how it's pronounced. Um, and former Commissioner Scott Peters was a big fan of King Devick, because it was something we were talking about at the time, adding to the pre-fight physical. You know, I know if you're here to be weighed in, you're here, and you might have ten minutes to take at least a King Devick. I'm not heading for that particular route. I like impact too. I'm glad we're talking about this. I think COVID kind of pushed it to the side, which is unfortunate, but I I'm glad we're talking about it. Mr. Vela, I'd love, if you can, to, uh, uh, at some point, maybe it's not today, talk about what the A B C recommends, if anything, what our other major competitors are doing right now, and what challenges they've had in doing, and what victories they've had too. So, I would assume this is something we should keep on the agenda. Uh, there's a lot of different ways to do this, but I I think we need to do it. But I think when we have them here for weighing it, uh, it can't be that hard to then run them through a baseline test. That's just, that's off the top of my head, anyway. Mr. Vela, other thoughts, questions?
So, uh, my thoughts, so just to touch on the A B C recommendation, so it's not, it's not an A B C test or necessarily the recommendation, but it was a program that was presented to us. The the developer of the program actually presented it to us in depth at the, uh, A B C and gave, uh, some of us access to, uh, download the application and use it for a year. So I do have a trial, and I'd I'd be happy to share my profile with with you all so that you can explore it yourself. Um, I did do the testing. Um, I'll say it's actually, it's a pretty tough, uh, test to get through. I was actually shocked at some of my own scores on it. Um, and, uh, and it's it's an eye-opener, you know. Obviously, I boxed, uh, for most of my life, and so, um, the baseline results that I got maybe, you know, uh, are are because of that. I don't know, but, um, but what I will say is that it is very in-depth, and it also, um, you know, it's a simple application. It takes, takes the, uh, the test taker through a series of, um, of different, uh, assessments. One, it'll make them walk. It'll make them do a heel walk. Um, it'll ask them a series of questions, and there's different segments to it, but ultimately, it gives a, it gives a good baseline, uh, reading. And, uh, there, there was a whole presentation, which I'll also send over to you, where the, uh, where the developer went into the scientific studies that they've had. Um, so overall, I really do like that program. Uh, there's also other elements to where if a fighter suffers an injury or something, uh, there's questionnaires and and assessments for that as well, so that you can see the difference between the baseline and, um, an injured participant. So, um, that that program is called Sportgate. Um, so if you want to explore it, uh, like I said, I'll follow up with an email to all of you, giving you access to to my, um, access within that, and you can take a look at it yourself. Um, I don't know, uh, exactly, uh, some of the other recommendations, like the Association of Ringside Positions. I'd like to look into that a little further, so I'll definitely, um, research the matter more, and and we can continue discussing it until we've come up with a with a suitable solution.
Thank you. I would appreciate. Yes.
No, I I would like to look at Sportgate, and, um, I think, you know, to, um, you know, I think, um, you know, to the earlier point, that the, I agree that the logistics may, there, there may be some complexity there, but we do expect already athletes to get, um, an optimal, ophthalmological exam, which has in the past been, um, you know, some significant, um, economic and logistical burden on on fighters. But I would argue this is as or more important than that as it relates to fighter safety, so I don't think, um, I don't think this is, you know, really outside the boundaries of our of our expectations. I think my comment on King Devick is it's a sideline test, um, that, um, is a good screening test to diagnose concussions after they've happened, but it's not, um, necessarily a good test for, um, baseline, um, to fall over time. I think one development since the last time we looked at impact is they now have, um, league or group rates, and so the commission could essentially purchase, you know, like a thousand tests a year or to cover essentially every fighter that ever, you know, fights, um, for a pretty low cost. You know, I I think it's like six hundred dollars or something like that, that would cover, um, the commission for a year. Um, so I do think economically, it's, it it, we as a commission could potentially take on the burden, um, for the fighters, um, without a significant impact, um, on our budget. Um, but that's just, uh, uh, I guess, part of this exploration would be also, um, the the cost either to the commission or the fighters.
Uh, some great thoughts there, Commissioner. Thank you. I, it sounds like we're all in agreement. We just need to figure how to go about this. Um, so the, let's leave this on the agenda for next month. Uh, Mr. Vela, if you would do a little exploratory work on how other commissions that have enacted this, how they're going about it, who they're using, et cetera, I think that would be helpful too. Um, but let's keep talking about it. This is important. I I sense we're, uh, in the right spot to. is important. I sense we're in the right spot to enact something and get, get something done. It's the right thing to do. And Commissioner Feinstein, you guarantee that pricing? Is that, is that you? $600?
Yeah, if you, if you look at the, the Impact website, they have these league, what they call league packages that I assume that we would be eligible for, you know, just at $695 a year, that covers 400 baseline tests and 10 post-injury tests. So I think there's a, there's a real potential there.
No, that's, that sounds like a bargain. We will pursue this further. Mr. Vella, take a look at impact too. I'm not, there's no right answer to this yet, but we should push forward trying to sort out what works best for us and for the folks who've come here to fight too. So let's all, let's all of us give this some more thought such that on December 21st, we can talk more eloquently about it, if you will. Thank you all. More to come on this. Anything else, fellas?
Yeah, just one, one request, Mr. Chairman. Could, Mr. Vella, could you involve Dr. Oda in, in, in your, in your research? Just because as the lead physician for the commission, I think his voice is really important in, in how we would operationalize this.
Yes, sir. I will include Dr. Oda.
Great suggestion, Commissioner Feinstein.
Absolutely. And we appreciate your, your work on this, Mr. Vella. I know you've got a full month ahead of you between events and training and everything else, but anything you can sort out as to what other people are doing and what might work best for us would be greatly appreciated too. Thank you.
Yes, sir. No problem.
Okay, let's press on to D, which is the call to the public. Anyone who'd like to chat with us, we're asked to hold your thoughts to five minutes or less. Mr. Vella, anyone want to say anything?
Yes, sir. I see Jason Martinez's hand up. Jason, you got five minutes?
Good morning, Mr. Vella and Commissioners. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity very briefly to speak. First of all, I want to thank you for approving Pedro Ogas. I will reassure you that I'm intimately familiar with how the commission will respond to potential matchups. And so I take my matchmaking very seriously. And he has matched up with another 0-1 pro with not a whole lot of amateur experience as well. So it is probably the most even fight I could have made for Pedro. So I do hear your concerns and respect them, and I do try to matchmake appropriately. And hopefully Mr. Vella can attest to that. So I want to thank you for approving Pedro for my December 10th card. Really quick, I, you got my ears peeked on the concussion protocol conversation. I know it's been going on for a while and I know you all have been trying to get something going on it for several years now. I do think it's important. I will echo the financial issue regarding the concussion protocol. If it's put on athletes, it's going to make things more difficult for them. So I, I really liked the option that I heard. I understand its potential and its budgetary and all that stuff. But from the matchmaker point of view, when I'm trying to organize a card backstage the day of, and they're doing pre-fight medicals, I think that is probably the most appropriate and best space to do a very quick, like I would, I would, I'm for concussion protocols all day long. However, from a production and a logistical point of view, I would like something that the commission could agree on that is like the lowest hanging fruit, so to speak, like the easiest test that the doctors are most comfortable with those results. So, so nothing that's like super involved, like 20, 30-minute tests, because that's going to push things into oblivion in scheduling. So something that could be done at the pre-fight medical would be really awesome, as long as it was brief, but also satisfactory to the doctors. That would be, that would be cool. We would support that. I think part of the cost factor relates to the fact that in Arizona, the medicals expired December 31st. And I, I know I've addressed this briefly with Juan before, but, and I know that this is not the body to change the law, but I, I think if we really go after concussion protocols, we need to change the medical expiration from, instead of it being whenever you get it, it expires December 31st. It needs to be your medicals are good for one year from when you get your medicals. And again, I know this is not the body to change that rule or that law. However, if we push hard for concussion protocols, I think doing the one year from date of exam expiration will help fighters get it done. And then we won't run into issues at the end of the year with people accepting fights and then not being able to follow through with all the medical requirements. So those are just, those are just a couple of issues around the concussion protocol that I, that I like hearing, but I would just hope that the, the commission and the, and the commission doctors would consider, one, the cost factor, the logistical factor, trying to make it, again, satisfactory for the doctors, but doable for the promotion as well and affordable for the fighters, if at all, preferably no cost. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. It's always good to hear from those who are in the trenches and herding all the cats, as it were, at these events. I know it's, it's a tricky business, but you raised some very valid points about the time it takes, the amount of money it might take to get baseline, the length of time that medicals hold up. I mean, all of that I know feeds into how, how easy it is to put a card together. Also, thank you for your focus on matchmaking. It's obviously critically important to us. So it's always good to hear from you and we appreciate your thoughts and more to come. We'll keep fighting the fight. Mr. Vella, anyone else want to chat with us?
Yes, sir. Looks like Mr. CJ Pittman.
Please.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. Yeah, again, we appreciate everything you do, and especially on the fighter safety end of things. Again, Jason, I, he's the best at what he does for a reason. He, he takes into consideration all of these things. We also have questions on our fighter intake side that regard percussion or concussions to make sure that we're kind of getting a baseline or a pre-script of, is this something we need to be concerned about with this fighter? Is this going to be an issue? Is this something they've had in the past, et cetera? One thought as we look into this in the future is going back to the global rules, like what one championship uses. Their concussion protocol and the data behind it so far is outstanding. And I can ask them to send that stuff over as well, maybe for just a brief look over from the commission and taking that into consideration as we go forward to the future of this sport. Their, their concussion protocol data is outstanding. So I, I think that would be a good reference to take a look at as well as how it's being done on a global scale. Just a thought. But again, thank you all. We appreciate everything you do and see y'all soon.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. You raised another great point. I, I, we'd love to see what everybody's doing. Juan does some really interesting stuff with weight cuts, for example, and I'd love to see what they're doing with their baseline testing. Please, if you would, whatever you have, if you could send that to Mr. Vella, we'd love to see it. If only one would get past their grounded knee thing, we might be able to do something with them, but that may take Congress there.
We're working on that, too.
Fair enough. Well, hey, I really appreciate you chiming in and your thoughts. It really help us understand what's going on at, you know, in, in your world. And that's, that's critically important to us too. So more to come. We're going to keep working on it. But whatever you've got, please send that to Mr. Vella and he'll get it out to us.
Will do. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Take care. Mr. Vella, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, it does not appear that there are anybody else that would like to speak.
Okay, let's push to E, the call to the commission. Commission members or the executive director may introduce a summary of current events, ask questions and/or make comments. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to anything we haven't spoken to as yet?
Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Pennington.
Oh.
I do have an issue, and that is the height of the abdominal protector on a boxer. I'm sure that we have all noticed that some of the boxers come out with the protector at the proper location, which is the umbilicus. You can see the navel. Others come out to where you can barely see the nipples on the fighter. So the belt is so high that it gives that fighter an over advantage or gives it an advantage as opposed to the person that's wearing their protector in the right location. So I am very concerned that we enforce our rule regarding the height of the protector. I have had an opportunity to visit with one of our referees. The referee, our referee then had a conversation with other referees, and they seemed to concur that the responsibility, and this is not definitive, I mean, I'm just throwing out what their comments were, that the inspectors really need to be on top of their game and not allow a fighter to come out if their protector is above the umbilicus. So that is something that I would propose that we have further discussion on, possibly at the December 3rd or whenever the ABC's referee training is, that we could have some input there. So I'm just very concerned. I've noticed this over the years, and it gives one fighter a great advantage over the other. So those are my thoughts and the direction I would like for us to start looking at.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a, it's a great point. And it tends to be amongst the smaller fighters. It tends to be a bigger issue. I know we've got some 112-pounders coming up here soon and some 115s. So, Mr. Vella, will you speak to that for a minute?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So Commissioner Pennington and I did have this conversation at the Rise of the Prospects event in Tucson. And, and I'm happy to say that we did, we had a boxing event last weekend on the 12th, the Del Sol, and I spoke with our chief inspector in depth about it and also with our referees, letting them know that, you know, obviously fighters should be coming out with the groin protector in the proper place, but also if it's moving throughout the bout, that's something that can be addressed in between rounds to ensure that, you know, as, as the bout progresses, that if, if the groin protector does come up, that it is readjusted to the proper place in between rounds. And they were responsive to it and I, and we did not have any issues at this last event. So I'll keep, you know, their feet to the fire and ensure that, that it continues to, you know, be that way, that we follow the rule.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Thank you, Commissioner Pennington. It's a, it's a great point and one we need to keep an eye on. Commissioner Feinstein, anything I'd like to talk about?
Nothing for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I too have nothing. Mr. Vella, anything else we should be chatting about?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that I am grateful that, that the folks from Ruff joined in on our conversation earlier with the concussion protocol. I do want to say that obviously, and I want all of our stakeholders and our licensees to know that, that their input is very valuable and that we certainly will make decisions, you know, with collectively with their input as well, because it is very important. I'm sure to them, you know, to, that we make this as, as easy as possible. And, and we certainly want to be in touch with what their needs are and what their concerns are. With that, sir, I do also want to make sure that everybody's aware that we do have the ABC training the same weekend as the December 3rd fight. So on December 3rd and 4th, we have an ABC referee and judges training. We're also going to be implementing on December 4th, the inspector training. So to kind of end the year and get us ready for the new year, all of our officials will be attending those trainings. So any officials that have not registered for that, if you are on the call, please do that. And any other officials from out of our jurisdiction are more than welcome to join as well. But that is all I've got, sir.
Well, you, you have quite a full plate. I asked you a month ago, is December 3rd and 4th, is that too full a plate for that weekend or are we good to go?
No, it'll be just fine.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you again for all your efforts.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vella, would you please send us out the agenda for the ABC meeting so that we know what, what's taking place during that time?
Yes, sir. I've almost finalized that. I was waiting on the trainers, you know, because obviously with the event being the same day, the trainers had to adjust their, their presentation length a little bit. So once I finalize that, I will send that out to you. No later than the end of the
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Anything else we need to discuss? There being none. I push to item F, the announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be at 11:00 AM on Wednesday, December 21st, 2022, and is subject to change based on a quorum. That concludes our business for the day, although adjournment still hangs in the balance. Is there a motion for such?
Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I move with adjourn.
And I was second then.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your time. I feel like we're heading in the right direction. A lot of good things on the horizon. Everybody take care. Again, thank you for all your time and interest.